Right.
Yeah. Uh, so Jill just email. Technical difficulties.
Good.
Hi Andrew, now we see you.
Hi there.
They also zoom got me the thing at the top where you can hyperlink the the meeting URL. Super fast, because that was a useful feature that people don't need anymore.
They have a lot of nice new buttons at the bottom.
I don't want to learn them. At least not right now.
Fair enough.
Hi Linda.
He's gonna send it to.
Hey Linda.
We have an agenda first.
Um, should we wait for Jill to call the order?
All right, um, no public comment, I assume. Or any, anyone have anything that's not on the agenda? So next up is minutes. Um, I know I had a couple of comments there, I'll just like small.
I did too, and then I had one that's significant we should look at. I didn't know how important it was, but I, the motion that we passed like two thirds of the way through it about the entered about the heating standard, local heating standard, the motion we passed, I kind of rambled and made, I went ahead and balled and made the motion, I kind of rambled in making it. And there were two points in the ramble that were included, and I didn't blame anybody for not including them because it was rambling. But I put the two points in it, if I want to see if people remember that and agree that they should be there, you'll, I did it as a we're not there yet. Oh, right there, yes, that is it, sorry. So the red is what I put in is the two things that I thought, because uh, the one was that I thought we were gonna ask staff to talk to the town manager to sort of partly to feel out where the select board was. And that we wanted to phrase it going to the town manager and to the energy committee as being, is this in line with the current town plan as amended in the energy plan? Start from there, don't start like, is this a good idea? We started like, is this appropriate to the town plan? That was actually, I think Reed suggested that we couch it that way and are those okay? Additions, do they add, do they, do they help to be that specific?
It's good direction for staff, so if the commission agrees that we approach it that way, that's fine.
Bill, do people remember those parts? Now that's asking a lot.
I mean, it looks accurate to me, of course, I can't remember exactly what was said. The word.
I rambled.
But the, the sentiment looks right.
I, I did the minutes, I think it sounds pretty close to what I remember. I think this helps add some of that detail. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes or present it as, as amended? Give me a second. All in favor?
I'm gonna stay, because I wasn't here.
Great.
So that's one, two, three, four eyes and one abstention.
And Jill, I think Jill has the phone number. We'll just say.
I can approve this, if we need a quorum for that.
No, that's, yeah.
Those look like good minutes, but.
Yes, it was a short meeting and there were a lot of minutes, and I think it was, it was nice that we documented the discussion.
Yeah, looks like it was very thorough.
All right, so I guess let's move on to the town plan draft chapters.
I'll just give a, an intro to this and then um, it can be a fairly free form and does not have to be necessarily a really long conversation tonight, but much to the staff's chagrin, I've embarked us on this kind of rapid pace, try to get something down for every one of the chapters we've identified on a every two week cycle through the end of July. Um, but nothing motivates like a deadline and um, it, it's feels good to, to put a couple of draft chapters up on the board. So you can see the ones that we've linked to tonight, um, those are ones where there's something both to, to look at and think about and also out on the Williston2050.com website, so we're, we're, we're putting these rough drafts out there publicly and announcing their presence on the website as well. And where they are on the agenda tonight, one, two, three, four, five, they're not in any particular order at all, and, and in fact, you know, number four introduction and number five Williston, people probably the other thing I wanted to say globally before we talk about any of them individually is just that I, I've roughed out a schedule for which chapters will be coming up. Um, and at a staff level and working with our teams, we may be swapping a few of those around as we go, and as we get closer to the end of this project, we may be realizing we can merge a couple or that there might be one or more that need to be split. And fully recognize there's probably quite a lot of overlap between um, strategies, goals, our strategies and actions that are gonna come out of these and that's okay, we will merge them up later when we write the implementation chapter, so just looking, looking at what you are reading and, and reviewing right now, remember that there's these other ones yet to be written, so there may be something that feels like an omission in one of these chapters, and then you realize, oh, it's, it's actually probably gonna be covered somewhere else. So with that, I can, why don't, why don't we bring up the land use chapter and I'll just talk about it, just the one I, I helped write. Um, and give folks a general sense of that.
Which one?
Uh, so it's uh, number three, land use district.
Which team is that?
Vision, and it's the green team.
Green, okay.
Um, I think, just the website you were just on, I, I think it said that we meet on the second and fourth Tuesday, and it's the first and third.
Oh, you are correct.
Oh, yeah. Good catch.
Good catch, that, that is a DRB.
Fix that. So while we're um, getting into that, I'll just give like a really general overview, what, what the chapter about land use usually is. It's, it's generally a chapter that says, this plan contains a map that divides the town up into land use areas, and, and here they are, and here's a little something about each of them. Um, that's the way the last many plans in the past uh, have gone. And those three maps at the top I put up just to illustrate that Williston's land use designation boundaries have been really very consistent across the years.
I couldn't understand the key for the first two.
Yeah, these, these are just illustrative without really, you know, trying, trying to make you read them, but just understand, just, you know, as a pretty picture for right now. But the general, the, the words that go with this, you know, just sort of say, there's been typically kind of an industrial area to the west, a core around Taft Corners, a historic village, suburban between I and I and Mountain View Road and, and agricultural rural around that, and, and then this industrial east thing around um, the dump and IBM, today CSWD Global Boundaries. And um, you know, that, that's, that's been a good thing, and then, you know, the other, the other part of it is there's the boundaries, and then here come the descriptions of what, what's generally allowed or encouraged or discouraged within them. And that over time, that system of doing those things has gotten more complex, we've added designations like the Village Center and the Growth Center, and we've added design overlay districts and um, things like that. Uh, and then of the next paragraph down that you can't quite see yet is um, just discussing some, some of the, the high points of what's happened to the zoning bylaw in the last, over the last plan period, so form-based code, inclusionary zoning. And the village. And um, then external factors, mostly talking about housing supportive um, preemptions that have come through in the state, uh, you know, leading into the home act and whatever ended up getting adopted this year, which we're not a hundred percent sure of yet, um, because I'm not waiting through the journal to try to figure it out. I'm just gonna wait till the governor signs or doesn't sign something. Uh, but the point being, there's, there's, there's been some pretty big changes to just what towns are and aren't allowed to do in Vermont, uh, and what we have to plan for. And then what have the general trends been, um, you know, that we've had a really big focus on the Growth Center, lots and lots of our homes being um, uh, built there. We've had a few things built in Gateway South around the interstate exit, which hasn't happened in a really long time, and, and finally tested some um, development standards that were adopted back in the early 2000s. We had one thing happen in the Gateway West District, the, the district that was created around Brownell Road and Williston Road. Um, and we've started to see a greater, you know, diversity of uses and more adaptive reuse in our industrial zone, and also the development of the Robaire parcel where U-Haul and, and all of that is, is a big change. Um, and lastly, IBM sold the Global Boundaries, um, and Chitin Salt Waste has done quite a bit of expansion of their facilities in industrial east. And, oh yeah, we have Summerfield and Glazer, and with those happening, not a lot of big land left in the sort of suburban residential, you know, RZD part of Williston, um, so likely projects going forward, smaller infill uh, type projects there, and the Ag Rural District is just going really, really, really slowly.
Can I give some feedback, because I found this one extremely readable and extremely clear. Um, and quite wordy, if, if we talked about not wanting a hundred pages or whatever, so I was trying to, it's, I was trying to think about that, and then all I could think of was things to add to it. Under, under those bullets, we just passed the, the recent trends, there's a trend that's not true in the past of having ground mounted solar installations throughout our districts. Right? And we're expecting more of that. And so, and that is something we want to address in the town plan and other sections, and I didn't know if you want to put bullet, just adding that in there.
Oh, that's good, and I'll say definitely, we're, you know, we're over a year out from our planned deadline, now's the time to slap stuff on and then we can carve back um, later. Um, so happy to.
Later we get, there's a question mark, and I, I know what goes in here.
Okay, and I think Ellie had a comment on that one too, maybe with a suggestion. We didn't really ask people directly about what do you think of the boundaries of the land use districts in Williston, so
Let's explain it.
You know, we do a little bit of inferring here, um, keep the rural rural, keep the village the village. Hold everything in Taft Corners kind of at, at bay, I guess.
And stop all development.
Change anything.
You know, I started looking for a poll quote in the compendium of comments, and then I just, I stopped.
Do your poll quotes from um, the postcards?
Yeah, the postcards are more.
It's a little.
Go bring the big postcard in.
Oh, okay.
We did it, we, Emily was at this kids to parks thing on Saturday and had kids write on a big giant postcard.
Oh, that's great.
Kind of fun. And I think the next thing that you're gonna see here is um, starting to try to go, you know, through, through our vision goal, strategy, action hierarchy. And we all kind of independently struggled with where to land, what, what resolution of thing, and I think that's gonna, I'm not worried about it right now, I think that's gonna gel as we go, but I'll talk a little bit about, yes, this was the kids. The kids postcard.
Playground, you take the rock wall up to the slide, probably at the new community center. Um, we should probably talk about dragons and the hazard litigation chapter.
Yeah. Yeah, also mammoths in the waste chapter.
Yeah.
Yes. Community. Is that as, how community will be spelled in 2023?
Affordable housing suburbs, that was fun.
It was good.
We have another kid thing, we could definitely have kids fill in more on that one.
It was really fun to watch, like, this is the first one, and this mom was like freaking out by how much space her kid was taking up, and I was like, just let him have at it, I was like, it's fine, parents, like, let the kids do what they want.
So you're right, poll quotes are definitely better from the postcards where people are a little more like forward thinking. A lot of the survey comments are like, right now, the thing that upsets me is that Friendly's is empty.
Yeah.
That won't be forever. So.
It'll be bagels.
It'll be bagels. So anyway, I was getting into talking about, yeah, sign in the window, so that's, that's, that's public knowledge. Um, I was getting down to talking about vision and just like, I think each of us struggled a little bit with like what resolution of everything goes in which level, and I think, and again, my takeaway is like, don't worry about it, we'll, we'll refine these as we get more chapters drafted. So I used the goal level of the hierarchy to talk about livable, resilient, equitable, and, and put those in words as it relates to land use. And then I kind of went back up and made the vision statement about integrating the goals with some of the summary of public engagement. That when, when people are telling us about land use, whether they realize they're telling us about land use or not, um, they're telling us about balance and they're telling us about not changing too fast. Is what it, what it felt like um, to me. So, you know, my, my goals, the, the equity one is about, you know, we are separating things and, and therefore sometimes separating people when we, when we make these boundaries, and we should be aware of that, and we should be thinking about ways that if that's necessary to do, we're still kind of overcoming it um, in, in other ways, and we'll talk about that later in the objective strategies and actions.
I thought that was a really nice summation of how zoning can have an adverse effect on equity. You summed it up.
Um, can I ask, can I add one little comment on that? The uh, just reading it quickly up on the screen there, um, I would love to see some of the, like, forward thinking, forward moving um, dimensions, I don't know if that's appropriate for this paragraph. Um, Emily, would you scroll up a little bit so we can see that again?
Uh, which one?
Like up.
This is the previous paragraph, the equity one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So so this is really good in explaining how zoning has been
Yeah.
used in, in um, very uh, exclusionary ways, and I guess what I would love to see at the end of this paragraph is kind of a a statement saying, like, zoning could also be used to dismantle those previous structures of exclusion.
Okay, yeah, the statement that would going forward.
Yeah, exactly, and that we're, we're aware of this history and the ways that has legacies into the present, and we would like to take active paths toward.
Okay. And, and it is in the following sections, but it's not stated here, so.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Okay, I haven't read the other ones yet.
And a good example, it's form-based code, written during COVID, prioritizing balconies, prioritizing some private outdoor open area, so even if you live in a more urban environment, you still have access to
Right.
fresh air and outdoors.
Yeah.
Yeah, also, some of it is because we've got such a, a, a big hierarchy where we have, sorry, vision, goal, objective, strategy, action.
Right.
It's, yeah, what, what, you know, actions are literally sometimes even like components of a single effort, is the way I kind of land, and so sometimes it comes out there, but we'll, we'll get there. But I like the idea of, of finishing out and saying like, it's not just that we acknowledge um, that we've got tension, but we're also, you're going to see things coming up that ha- help us resolve it or, or navigate it.
Right, there's also a, a sort of active voice that would be nice for that piece too, because like the, the sentence beginning with the word allowing, it says allowing more affordable types of homes only in areas along busy quarters and stuff. Yes, allowing is a very, like, passive reaction.
Limiting.
Kind of thing, right.
Limiting.
Whereas that, I think the sentence is fine, but then I would like to see the, the sort of active engagement of the town so that we're not just sort of hand maintenance to the market, but we're actually laying out a plan that has some equitable potential.
I really like that, uh, Megan, and I, this is a place where we could um, link to a yet to be written section um, that Andrew and Chapin and I have thought about in terms of the, you know, like, making sure that we have acts, and it goes to what you're saying, Emily, about like access to outdoor space, but also true access to those more rural areas for folks living in the more densely populated spaces, so just um, it shouldn't go, doesn't need to go into lots of detail in order to duplicate, but if there's a way to do the fancy pinning or some, somehow show that, you know, there, there are, and maybe it is saying, you know, in this town plan, there are ways in which we are endeavoring to address some of the inequities caused by this, like.
And we've woven them in.
There's public access to the rural landscape, um, making sure that there's available trails in, you know, most parts of Williston, not just in the rural area, you know, um, I think we should give some show some of what the plan is doing in other spaces that address not all, but some of those pieces.
Yeah, I think I wrote maybe one action or strategy down below about that, and then I stopped because I knew there was another chapter being written, but I'll see if we get to, I'll see if it's there. Probably of these three, equity is the most interesting one, but I can, I can briefly go over the resilient and livable. I don't know if you can scroll, scroll down and say, I know you're doing like four things at once right now.
I saw you hit a key, I thought you were doing it without even looking.
So really with resilience, I led to, like, we want to keep our consistency, but to do that, we have to try and do things sometimes or, or be responsive to things. You know, we, we have changed, the development standards are gonna change, um, but we're, we're not trying to like completely alter what one part of town is and turn it into something else necessarily, uh, because there's been value in that, in that consistency, and actually, we're pretty good at the, I, I personally, from like a planning perspective, think Williston is just one of the best geographically arranged places as far as like classic planning goes. It's pretty, there's a few places where things are a little tight, but um, it's pretty good. And, and so a lot of, a lot of conflict that might exist is fairly well resolved by the geographic arrangement of things. So resilience to me is about how do you, how do you kind of keep doing that? And then um, you know, livability kind of nods a little bit um, at, we're gonna do different things in different parts of the town, because where we do our living, when we need to take our trash to the transfer station is gonna be different than where we maybe want to sleep at night, and it might be different than where we want to go um, do noisy recreation or something like that, right? Um, and the idea that we'll have all of those places that serve all those different livability needs available in town. Because one thing people told us in the public engagement a lot, that they liked about Williston was how much they could do without having to go out of town. All right, so then, just to see like, what does that objective strategy action hierarchy, hierarchy look like, and we don't have to go through all of them, but you know, this first one is an objective about open space, uh, and keeping open space, keeping the rural rural. One strategy under that is to continue to lay our infrastructure out along those same boundaries. And in action, there's really an inaction, which is, you know, even, I did my classic open parentheses without closing it, you'll see we do that everywhere. Embarrassing, um, but, you know, even where the infrastructure in the market might be asking you to bend, maybe, maybe don't. Um, and then another strategy about open space is to keep requiring it in rural subdivisions, because that's the way we get open space, and town's been very successful with that. And some actions under that are to, to monitor the performance of that, audit it, make sure it's doing what it's supposed to do. Um, and, and decide if you need to change anything about that, so like internally, we've talked about today, open space is required in the Ag Rural District, if you're subdividing ten and a half acres or greater. Are there sometimes five acre lots being split where open space could or should be required at some level, because five acres is actually quite, quite a bit of land. But under that same open space goal, uh, you see another strategy there about um, you know, being careful about expanding those districts in and looking at some places where the sewer service area, because of the home act actually allows for significantly more density. And is that something we want to address? Uh, and then the last one, if you scroll down, is about the aesthetics of rural Williston, and, and it just leads to that update, the visual resource assessment, and I thought, gosh, that's probably gonna end up in what Andrew's writing eventually, but um, so those were all about those were all about, the first, the first set of strategies were all about keep the rural, keep open space open. And then the next one is that make it more accessible to everybody, and then I'm like, Andrew's working on this, it'll go there, um, so that's and I think if you keep going down, like, there's others of these, um, you know, keep the different parts of Williston connected with bike-headed infrastructure, and then I didn't go super deep in this, because I think it's gonna land in, you know, transportation. Another, another one about connecting people to rural Williston.
And that's where, you guys want to steal that away? No, that's where I have the answer, because we discussed it.
Okay, perfect.
Now there's in the Ag Rural District, we talked about the potential of campground, you know, other things besides just parks and trails. Um, and campgrounds, local food vendors, hospitality, we talked about, and then we also talked about um, active recreation. You know, sledding hill, you know, like a, used to be a rope toe down in North Williston. We, we talked about recre- active recreation, and then how do we limit it? Do we allow paintball, paintball thing or not? And it's a hard question.
You know, I never said anything here about supporting vast.
Yeah.
Snowing trail trails. I never thought, and Ellie, I think your comment on this, on the question marks was more about um, art studio?
Yeah, encouraging arts and like, the creative economy is another thing.
Yeah.
I guess, good to charta.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's our shepherd coming up.
So there's a lot of things that today, because the Ag Rural District is really very strict, that the businesses basically need to either be a B and B or really strongly related to a farm. Um, someone, if, if someone said, I'm gonna do um, it's the pottery place down 116 Starksboro, it's been there forever. Frog, not Frog Hollow.
No, it's the artist's studio.
The one, the one that's just like in the middle of rural Starksboro on the side of 116 before you get to Bristol.
I think I know the one.
And they have a, an in-ground firing.
Yeah.
Thing, yeah.
And it's, and it's like a huge
Yeah.
commercial operation, but also totally fine out in the middle of nowhere. And so if that, somebody has to do that in Williston in the Ag Rural District today, we would say no. And so that's kind of an open conversation, and
Figure that out.
You know, an action would say, go figure that out, go see, go see if that's something the community's interested in um, having in this very sort of monoculture residential um, rural part of town. So so the action is like, okay, planning commission, it's twenty twenty six and we said we were gonna. See if, see if we could figure this out and, you know, let's do a survey, let's hold a forum, let's talk to local artisans, let's look at our bylaw and what it says and and we would. We would do that as a project. Oh, Compton, that's the one I'm thinking of. I took a field trip there in kindergarten. Been there forever. It's very cool. He does fountains and oh, all kinds of amazing stuff. It's really.
I'm gonna go check it out with my friend who's visiting.
Yeah, and there's the building. It's a super funky castle looking.
Oh, wow.
Studio. Yeah.
What can visitors do there?
Um I think you can take classes, you can certainly buy stuff.
See, right out on the road, there's that, you can see stuff right from the road that I'm.
Look at all that solar.
Yeah, it's.
Just straight creeping at this point.
Yeah, so that's just, that's just kind of an example of that.
We need to figure it out and we have the same issue with the um. Residential district with the fact that we have things like Adams Market, riding the horse farm.
And the vet.
And the vet.
Riverco vet.
A riverco vet and and in the village, we have uh the quick stop, things that people value that do seem to add and complement other things. That would not be allowed if someone tried to do them. We have to figure out how to. Do that in a way that doesn't open the door to things that are become a problem. Um I had a comment. Matt, ju- just I guess later I'll I'll look at it with this lens, but from the perspective of Native Americans whose land we've taken. Um we need to in the introduction, say something about that, which isn't there yet. Um and what like here, we say open areas been open for thousands of years. Uh it was forested for thousands.
We should just say, we should say without buildings on.
Yeah, that's right. I could just say a natural landscape. Because it was forested until Europeans came and cleared it. Um and so we want to be careful to.
Yeah.
About that.
Being clear. I think I think we are going to have a much more upfront acknowledgement.
Yes.
As well.
Yeah.
But I think when you're getting into land use and you're really saying, okay, this land is this now and that land is that. And oh, you know, you were here for twenty generations before, well. You know, now I'm here and that's the industrial zone is, you know, it's pretty blatant stuff.
It is.
When you really think about it, so.
Kinda like we probably wouldn't wanna say that there were no structures in land management, but. They had. It was just different than the Europeans.
Might just call it, might just say, you know, a rural landscape that was a some kind of rural landscape.
Well, it was very sustainable.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes they even burned areas.
Sure.
It was, they were not just standing away from the environment, but.
Land management was very different for European people around.
Yeah, but I. I'm I'm just thinking that that's sort of something to come back to.
Yeah. So you know, the the intent of this chapter is mostly to go through those various um designations. Looking back at old town plans, like in nineteen ninety, the land use chapter also contained what was called the open space plan. Which went into way more detail about that. We're not necessarily doing that here. Uh but. Talked about, I think I covered.
I I liked that we had an objective for the industrial areas.
Yep, I think that's one we've kind of talked about before. Um, you know, it's changing. Some of, some of sometimes what we're seeing is the less industrial thing that goes into the industrial area finds itself in conflict with the industrial things. So the daycare that went in. When the planning commission and select board changed the rules to allow child daycare in industrial because someone said, gosh, all these people work here, we need childcare. That daycare then objected to Casella waste using the the birdbanger uh gas explosion machines. That keep the seagulls from flying up into the jets at the airport. You know, when they're flying around the trash at Casella. So that you can end up with conflict and and, you know, having an industrial zone means you you actually do want those uses. In your town, um and you're kind of acknowledging that they, you know, that they play a role, so. You know, seeing the adaptive use and reuse and seeing things that bring more people. Into that zone can be really cool and it can be a second life for a lot of buildings and and all of those good things, but also. You know, remembering um. Like everything that we're, you know, that we're balancing that. And I I got into a big transportation thing on this one. Um sorry, I'm still in industrial, but just the whole, when you start thinking about, well, now we're having more people come there. We've got this big wide wide road like industrial ab that we said we wanted to put sidewalk on. Um we've got people walking to Island Ice Cream along the road now because it attracts them. Uh but we don't have the pedestrian facility here. So as it diversifies, there might be a need to treat it more like the kind of place where people might be out. You know, walking and biking around a little bit um. Most of my suburban, I said I call this suburban residential rather than calling it the R Z D. Um but you know, deal with the home act, deal with the fact that there's more density, think about whether that occasion's bringing in some design standards or review. Really brief on the village because we've got a whole bunch of other stuff there and I do have an unfinished sentence identifying any something. I think I think just any opportunities to change. So in a couple of these where we've had had or will have. Big zoning changes right at the beginning of the plan period, I'm identifying a year or two from its expiration to say, go in and and audit this and.
Yes.
Write a little white paper about, hey, how's the form-based code doing? What, you know, by twenty thirty, what have we seen? Are there like big picture changes that need to be made at that point? Make tweaks in between now and then, but. Um definitely do that both with um town corners and the village. Then there's um. The last part at the very bottom there, Emily, is all of all of the stepchildren. So.
Yes.
We have these other places in town that we've not put a lot of focus on. And some of them contain collections of land uses that the town inherited practically before zoning. And um. As much as I'm trying to say in this objective as anything is um. These need some attention and they they raise some questions. Um and they're not all quite the same, but I kind of lumped them together. So um.
Yeah, and there's, it's a catch twenty two. You you put a drive-through food service at exit twelve, then you get more traffic coming through exit twelve.
And on to A and.
Yeah.
All around. Exactly, so um. You know, I I raised that partially because drive-through means there's gonna be some energy in the conversation. It's a little bit provocative.
No, but that's I like all the rest of this as well, Stephen.
You know, but I just start to think about like, what are the projects that you'd want to assign yourselves or a future planning commission about? The area around exit twelve or the area around Walmart and Home Depot. Or everything on Route two A north of Stone and Flag Works to the Essex Line um. Uh even the the Little Gateway West District around Brownell and Route two where we've had one successful redevelopment, but kind of nothing else. Um the the list of allowed uses there is really narrow um. There are, you know, we we've had our chimney supply experience like. My view would be there's, there's probably something more formal for the planning commission to take up. And I guess that's my last point is. Naming these things and naming them as projects also gives you an entry when someone comes to you and says, I've got a problem with the way this is happening on my land. Gives you or that future planning commission the opportunity to say, well, actually, the town plan supports us giving this some attention and and maybe independently forwarding something.
We recognize.
Yeah.
It was an issue.
So think about this a little bit too, is when when this chapter calls for attention to be given to land use boundaries or. Standards that these are things, if someone came to you with a problem, if you can peg it to one of these, you don't have to tell them. Just go do a specific plan or gosh, well, you know, we've got a big list of things to do, but we'll do this after we did everything the town plan said we were gonna do because you'd say, oh. We actually have acknowledged that that's something we want to put some work into. So maybe opens the door a little further to. Working on some of those things, so.
And maybe calling out the ones that are frequent questions, like if we don't want to have drive-throughs near exit twelve. Like say something like that in the town plan. So when that request comes up, it's like the planning commission made a conscious decision about. Not making some of these changes, but making some of these other changes.
Yeah, that's that's like my Mountain View Road boundary example.
Yeah.
It I don't know that it's forever, but you might say, you know, for the next eight years. No matter how badly somebody wants to do a high-density residential development on the other side of that road, um we're we're not gonna consider that right now. We know, you know, file a specific plan if you want, but um but we wouldn't necessarily, this group wouldn't take it off. The and the last, the last thing that I haven't done um that we'll do is we start collating all of the probably. Strategies and actions into an implementation chapter at the end is starting to put a priority order around these. And think about what's what's the first thing, what's the most important thing, what's the biggest thing that we ought to be doing out of each of these categories, so. That's sort of the the general structure we're trying to follow with most of the chapters. Um other than the introductory and the Williston's people chapter and then um kind of a view into how it. How it can work. So I'm interested in feedback on this chapter, but also on generally the the flow and structure of all these chapters um. You know, if you've looked at more than one, you know, we've all done it a little bit differently. Well, and the formatting, don't. We're gonna do that way at the end. It we'd be fighting it all the way if we started now.
We're gonna put it into InDesign.
Into what?
InDesign. Yeah, it's gonna look professional and it will be professional by monkeying with word.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz you know the thing in Word, like resize one picture and it goes.
Fighting it for thirty years.
Yeah. We're 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 giving up, we're waving the white flag and buying better software.
Good for you.
Um it's not that expensive and it's just InDesign is um like what Jeff Farrell built the form-based code in. It just let, it lets you grab things and move them around without it like pushing everything.
Like if you do it, if you do a map in GIS. You can then have it linked into InDesign and if you tweak your map, it tweaks the image in your InDesign document. And once we pick like a template, then you just slot all the chapters in.
Yeah, so that'll be, you know, like next year's, after the select board's had a look at the text and, you know, had an eye on general direction and things, that'll be. The project, but. I think even just. Each of us trying to decide, well, I'm thinking about a thing from our brainstorm, is that a strategy or an action? Or is it aligned in the objective statement?
Yeah.
You know, figuring that out is tough.
Sure.
Sheila.
I I just, my general feedback is it's great. I think the the prioritization will be. Challenging, challenging, but really important um. And. And and making sure that there's the in in the um. In the prioritization process. At least in the stakeholder groups where we were in person, we asked for the like, what was the must-do, like what's the things that. Absolutely top priority have to happen. So and I can't remember if we talked about that in this report. So I don't know if there's like a way to call that out um. Like. You know, the feedback we got and or the planning commission's number one priority for this chapter is.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to to come to that in each chapter and also to call back to the roundtable. You know, the summaries that are in the engagement report.
Yeah.
Um think about how we might work that in. And definitely in the implementation chapter, going back to the. We have those like maybe two and a half pages in the engagement report. That really sort of drill into like, these were the most important things under each of these topic areas and then making that statement of like. The planning commission didn't just like run that process and then go write a plan. We ran that process, we wrote a plan, and then we prioritize the actions based on what we saw when we ran that process. Also, I'd like to give this thing. So you wanna talk about a different chapter?
We could do mine. It's it's pretty similar.
And Andrew, we have.
Do you wanna screen share your chapter?
Yes, yeah, I can do that.
And Andrew, just to make sure I understand right, we've got, we've got the draft and then a lot of other stuff is after in the document.
Uh yeah, we have a a list of our our ideas down below.
Yeah.
Um I think a lot of that is included in this and then some of it, I think, applies more to either. Our conservation topic or our uh working landscapes topic. And I think that that speaks to a conversation that Chapin, Shayla and I had, which was about. You know, kind of trying to figure out how these topics um. How they fit together and that, you know, I think writing this specific chapter. I found myself very quickly um. Going into those other other topics and so um. Matt had kind of mentioned that previously. I think we kind of tabled that for now. Um but definitely something to be aware of and. Um those things that are at the bottom that aren't in this chapter will probably be seen in the the next chapter and I'm sure there will be overlap.
Yeah, yeah. Andrew, can you make the print bigger? The review pane on the right, the right side.
Let me know um.
Yes, you're, now you're talking.
Okay, cool. Um so I'll just do a a quicker overview um. So. First paragraphs here are talking a bit about um. Value of of Williston's rural lands um and specifically what what. Our people value um about it um. There's a little mention there as well is that as was Williston continues to grow, um the importance of of balancing um. A topic that Matt talked about in his chapter as well um. Development with working landscapes, land conservation and recreation will grow um. There's a paragraph here which I I think can be um added to and also changed a bit. Um talks a little bit about what our current land use regulations are. All that to say that it's it's relatively low residential density um and that this will likely continue. And then. A a mention and and I think this should be stated, um if we keep it separate from our conservation and working landscapes. Chapters that, you know, here we're talking specifically about. Um land use regulations and subdivision design in rural areas and not um conservation and working landscapes. Um so that's kind of something to to put a pin in, I think. Um some recent trends in the R Z D, once again, um not necessarily a comprehensive list, but. Um stuff we see in the office. Our new small projects exemption. Um it's possible that in the past, the growth management process discouraged some of these smaller projects from happening. The new regulations may mean we see some smaller projects. Um we've been seeing a few um. Kind of bumping along in the office um. We've also seen um some older, larger parcels that are are cleaning up their boundaries. Um clarifying ownership, we've had a couple that, um you know, are are larger. Open space subdivision and we've we've gotten our open space parcels defined and some some boundaries drawn around. Um houses that have previously shared a lot and so into separate parcels. Um and then one more, um only a couple examples of this, but um there are two examples of of people doing. BLAs or trying to do BLAs, um that's a boundary line adjustment to avoid the open space requirements. Um speaks a little bit to something Matt was talking about before with, you know, do we. Look at that that threshold and um that's discussed uh below as well. I listed off um our livable, resilient and equitable um kind of main. Topics discussion that we've had with our group. I won't go through them all, um but generally livable um. The value of of open space for uh people in Williston and and also for. You know, wildlife and ecological benefit. Go ahead.
I put the word public with a question mark there because we had talked about that and I just realized maybe that belongs down under equitable. That um when we talked about, this is probably worth sharing with other people, that when we talked about. Additional uses that are not currently allowed in the ag rural zone, like event barns and things. That the a key thing is that they be public, meaning that they don't have, you don't have to be a member of a club or. It's not private. Um, public use of gathering spaces like for um. You know, for a. Well, see weddings are usually private events, um but farmers markets, uh fairs, um events that. That that are open to the public was to us. A qualifying thing for saying it is equitable equitable and something we may wanna allow even if it's not currently allowed.
I think there's an argument there that that making those spaces public is is all three of these things.
Yeah.
But yes, I I do think that that I agree that that should be um included and. Um, we can talk more about specifically where we wanna say that. Um, for resilience, talking about economic resilience.
I just had a comment, Andrew, um, that's okay, um. I'm a little worried about the the term public. Public in in general suggests. Um, open to. Free participation. And I don't think a lot of what we're talking about is necessarily free, cuz if it's a commercial space. It's publicly accessible but privately owned. And so I think we just have to be careful about that because we wanna make a distinction between publicly accessible. Versus a true public.
Yes.
Land, truly public land, like anyone can go and walk at Catamount. And that is public, but. Um, you know. Uh, people can't just start walking through Adam's fields. Uh, or orchard if there's no event happening. Uh, and so. I just, just kind of a little cautionary note there that when people may freak out if you say. That their farm is now public.
So it's events that are.
Right, and that that um like Church Street is privately owned, but it's publicly accessible. Um, it likes to pretend that it's public, but it's not actually. Um, so that's just kind of a, I'm just a geography geek, but.
Good.
Yeah.
I think we need to be careful about that.
Yeah, you think that like a ski resort, it's kind of like a private club because you have to buy a pass.
Right.
For tickets to be a member of the season of the day, but it's.
Or a farmer's market is open to the public.
Farmer's market's open.
To come and purchase something in that moment, but. When that, when Isha, you know, if it's not Tuesday night or whatever the time is, you can't just go wandering through the barn, right? So it's, it's, it's partly time dependent and also um ownership dependent.
Yeah, thank you.
To be such a big.
No. I think that's great. Um, I think both of those things are important, um you know, public lands and private. The own businesses that are publicly accessible. Um, and there's more there and I think we we should keep talking about it. So, uh, some different ways that our open space. Add resilience um. Resilience for once again, more than just people. Um, flood resilience there, maybe one to put an asterisk next to. Is that more? You know, um town facilities, talking about roads and infrastructure. And then um down to our equitable list and this talks a little bit about what Matt was getting at about. Zoning generally and and making um, or if you're focusing. Housing development in the growth center, are you making the the ARZD more exclusive? Uh, we've seen a jump in prices in that part of town and and so fewer people may. Be able to to live there in the future. Um, but then, you know, maybe you balance that out with. Making sure that there's funding for for the maintenance of existing um open space. Um, country parks, trails and and possibly the expansion of those. Uh, for public engagement, once again, we we didn't really ask specifically about rural land use. Um, but many of our responses kind of shed light on on what people value. Um, there was a very strong kind of sense that we we wanna. Maintain the rural character or have rural Williston stay the way it is. Comments about housing there. Some respondents commented on um the benefit of of keeping housing or focusing housing, I should say. In tough corners and also the importance of prioritizing conservation. Um, so you can see we we kind of bleed into different topics here, but we. Um, and then there are a couple quotes that I pulled. These are all from the survey. Uh, some more groups we need to talk to. And then um. Our goal, objective, strategy and and action. Um, and you can see I've I've called out at the top, you know, our related topics and goals. To be mindful of. So um. A little bit shorter for this one, uh the main one here. Is the goal is preserving rural parts of Williston um by creating that balance. Um, and you can see I've I've noted there to incorporate. The um livable equitable equitable and resilient into this goal. So generally, um the objective stopping contains for all um in rural Williston. And then you can see um some different strategies and actions that. Um, I think a lot of them boil down to to keep on on doing what we're doing, um but there are. A fair number. I've tried to to include the ones that specifically call out, you know, maybe there should be some more discussion about. These in the future, do we wanna adjust regulations um like the open space regulation? Do we want to remove transfer of development rights and um policies about large open space developments? Um, within the town plan specifically. Um, and then additionally, I'm talking specifically about. Um, how. We regulate um protection of of. Many different natural resources in town. I think generally, again, the the goal here is to continue to update these um different tools. That we have um and the different resources that we're looking at and. And this is something that the Conservation Commission is talking about, um talking about it in light of um future conservation efforts. And I think also in in development review. And so, once again, we see those two topics coming together and can kind of. Yeah, inform each other, but. Some of some of our um. Our data about natural resources, as you, many of you know, probably is very outdated and so. I think that's an important thing to to have in here. I think I'll I'll leave it there um. Mentioned there of the the working landscape, once again, I think we're um. You know, kind of kind of weighing, does that go in this chapter or in. On the working landscape chapter, if we're talking about specific uses that are allowed, maybe it goes in here. Um, be interested in in thoughts and um if anyone has anything they wanna add, comments, et cetera.
The three actions um that are just now off the screen, um those three actions are. Right in. Those are key.
I have a question, Andrew, um.
Yeah.
And this is maybe not necessarily for for this chapter or this chapter, maybe it's not just for. This chapter only, um but I I in the resilience piece. Um, how much, how much conversation have we had about? Sort of energy versus, because that seems like. A dimension that.
Looking for Melinda there.
Okay. Right, I mean, that obviously the that we have the the energy committee, but um. I'm I'm thinking about like how can we weave that into all of our. Or or do we even want to um weave that into our resilience dimension?
The the climate resilience.
No, I'm thinking about energy production, like I'm thinking solar, that kind of thing.
Yeah. I had a hard time, but the reason I didn't suggest we had it here, even though I did to Matt in his other list, is because. It's across all.
Right, exactly. That's why I'm not sure.
This zones.
Yeah.
So that's for that reason, I thought it works best in the energy section, but I don't know.
Fair enough.
Yeah, we definitely put it in all zones.
Right. In a lot of ways, though.
Has more, a different impact in Ag World than the dozen others.
Yeah, sure, um. I would also say that. Of the various forms of resilience that Williston. Needs to think about, um. Energy is probably one of the main ones because. Ultimately, that's what's gonna help. Climate adaptation.
Yeah, and the current town plan says we need, you know, the the energy plan. Says we need to do much more generation and that we need to prioritize where it's already in previous surface, like on rooftops and parking lots. Over ground mounted solar. And so to me, ground up, it's time of ground on a soul, I wouldn't want to detract from. The push to get more over parking lots and buildings.
So here's the thing, though. The rural areas to be more resilient. May benefit from a different energy strategy. So one of my students this semester, uh this year, just finished a thesis on um electric vehicles. And did a bunch of interviews with people who were, who already owned electric fields, but also who. Did not and were maybe hesitant to do so. And a lot of, a lot of them, this was not in. Uh, this was out in more rural areas than Williston um gives in general. A lot of the hesitation around EVs was related to energy and and power. At the point at their homes, right? So, so if you think about it, like the growth center. So much of the efficiency that comes from the growth center is around transportation energy. Right? Because people live close together, they live close to shops and they, you know, there's a critical mass, so they could take the bus and all of that. All of the thinking about dense is good has always been rooted at least. Partly in energy efficiency, like a major, in a major way.
Yeah.
Rural areas. Are now because of EVs and. The the possibility of either rooftop or ground mounted solar. Have a new possible path toward higher energy efficiency than they have now. And so I just am thinking in terms of. You know, for this chapter, because it's about rural land use, that. If if part of our strategy is to shift to renewable energy, and of course it is. Um, that means that the transportation is a big piece of that. We know that driving causes most of our current emissions. And um so rural communities need the capacity to generate their own energy. In a way, and they have possible open space to do it, right? Like if you're living in an apartment in Finney Crossing, you can't, you can't put your own solar panel out there, right? But. If you're living in a rural area and you have an EV and you have a solar panel. That introduces a whole new level of resilience, both for the individual household, but also for the community more broadly. And it cuts back on carbon emissions. So I just wanted to, I know Will and Ezra hand up and and I will be quiet now, but um I just wanted to plant that idea. Because I really see, at least in my field, I see a big shift, a potential shift. Toward starting because of the solar production in rural areas. That's starting to poke holes in a lot of our ideas about concentrating growth is the way to go. And so I think, you know, Williston would be very forward looking if we recognize that. Recognize that rural areas. Um, resilience depends in part on energy resilience and that may look like. You know, individual households having solar panels and EVs.
And batteries.
Yeah, and batteries.
Microgrid, especially in, if we're not power insurance to in terms of being. Immune to power failures.
Right, so this, my students' uh surveys, a lot of people. Who live in quite rural areas were saying, I would love to get an EV, but. I don't have, you know, I don't have the power capacity. And at the end of the line, there's not, it's not reliable, power goes out all the time, I don't wanna be stuck. And so I just, I'm just reporting back some some inklings of. Some surveys uh from rural areas of Vermont that I think are relevant and and if we can think ahead. To, to that possibility, it might be helpful.
Yeah, I was just assuming that was the natural, you know, it's what what we've done, put batteries in, put solar out.
Yeah, but I don't, it's not, I think this is a great chance for us to kind of codify it a bit and to put it in the plan and to. You know, maybe support people's efforts to go in that direction. Um, anyway, Melinda has her hand up, so.
Yeah, I I like, I like all those thoughts. And one thing I might add is just, uh, there's an opportunity to integrate um. Solar uh arrays with some forms of agriculture like. You know, um, I don't know, people are raising sheep and. Yeah, grazing grazing under the, around the arrays and. And even some people planting, I I I listened to, I think I listened to something recently that was. Talking about um how you can actually plant certain crops um under the arrays and that's beneficial. So anyway, I think there's, there's also, there are opportunities there and that might. You know, that might uh be discussed in the rural lands chapter. Also, uh, there where there's overlap in between like the rural. Um, discussion of rural lands and also energy um is around food security and um. You know, I think uh. Particularly around um making community gardens more accessible um. You know, encouraging that, you know, sort of local production of food. Um, and where Williston owns parcels of land. Um, assessing those parcels for their potential to. Uh, to be um integral in food security. So anyway, that's. All I have to say.
Yellow team has more ideas on that in a different chapter.
One thing that I can think of through, it really think those things are going to help us in the future. I may studying down the road, there will be some commercialization of. I may studying down the road, there will be some commercialization of EVs and solars and batteries and all together as a package, right? Because in reality, they have to come together, you cannot do all in one.
They already are doing that, yeah.
Right, and if there, there are those things are happening, like it's a pilot stage or some promotional starts, we should be all out there to say, oh, we're gonna do that in Williston, right, either at the state level or the federal level, right? Those are the things that we could do, and we should be just watching out and, you know, cool it out, right, and promote it here, right? So those are potential things, and it will have a, a lot more beneficial than, you know, everything else, because it's more somebody want to promote it.
Right, right now, that stuff is being promoted statewide and utility wide, in other words, utilities have programs and efficiency Vermont and state incentives like tax breaks and stuff. So it's broader than Williston, but what we could say is that we will support and encourage.
Yeah, that's what I said, we're gonna promote ourselves also, right? If it is there, then, but people are not aware of it or not taking advantage of it.
And the current energy committee is doing that with articles in the paper pointing out what opportunities are available to people and so forth. Good point.
What's next?
So the first thing I'll say is that when I talk about village bylaw, I talk about it in this draft in the past tense, because it will be in the past tense before this draft um becomes final. Um, so.
Bigger for those of us over fifteen.
Or like literally everybody. Bigger checks is easier.
Thank you.
So um, the village is the quaint little historic core of the town. Um, it's been an important place since its creation, but the intention that's been put into this town is disproportionate, so it's a small area that seen relatively slow change over time, yet there's a lot of care and passion um in this area, even to, the recent bylaw amendments are gonna change a lot of things, but we're not gonna see very much happen, just because it's a small land area. Um, and this chapter tends to look at ways of balancing tensions, so between preservation and cost, intensity of use, um, and adaption to new um places and spaces. Uh, so livable, uh, the village is a quaint historic place with things for people to do and see, so thinking about publicly accessible spaces where things are free, we have town hall and the library and the village community park. And this plan thinks about how it can become more livable, so the Williston Road corridor, encouraging places for people to walk, bike, uh, community gathering in third spaces.
The brick church too.
And the brick church, yeah. Um, resilient, so unlike many historic villages in downtowns in Vermont, this one is not in a floodplain. Also, our growth center is not in the floodplain, so we are extremely lucky that we are not dealing with flood resilient in our resilience in our beloved historic core, or where we see most of our growth into the future.
It's just in a wetland.
It's just a wetland. It is a swamp.
Small problem, that's why.
It's a swamp, but it's, it's not gonna flood your, your house.
Only your basement.
Only your basement, not the second or fifth.
And also adaptive reuse of existing buildings that keeps construction waste out of the landfill, adapting buildings um has less material consumption. Um, and that these historic buildings are living proof of resiliency, they've been adapted through time, both of these buildings used to be churches um at one point, and now they're civic buildings, and we see homes become businesses or multiunits, so they stand the test of time. Um, and equitable, everybody should have access to the village and its amenities. Um, particularly regardless of their access to personal vehicle or mobility level. So making these civic buildings ADA accessible, um, thinking about how transportation can be made so that people who don't have a car or can't walk very far have the ability to get here, places to sit in between um the, the blocks. Um, and that further investment in change should not be solely for aesthetic value, but um bringing present day and future community together. Past planning efforts, when we do our graphic design version, taking the whole recitation, so zoning was adopted in nineteen sixty-five, the historic district came in in the eighties. There was a great fear in the eighties about strip development wiping out the village, we have that iconic photo of what a red lobster in the village or a strip mall it might look like. So density and design standards really clamped down to protect the rural character, now um trying to um allow some flexibility and infill.
To add one explanation point on that, there was an effort to raise the brick church and put a gas station there.
R A Z.
Yeah.
Like knocked down.
Um, public engagement, we did ask some specific questions about the village. Um, in fact, um, what people would like to see in the village, more restaurants and cafes, more gathering spaces, unique small businesses and shops. Do you know that six percent of the question respondents said they would like the village to stay as is, that was a write-in answer that a lot of people wrote in. In comparison to the growth center, where only two percent of question respondents said we want the growth center to stay the same or be less of what it is. Um, the village community park and the multi-use path were the number one most popular park in the survey, um, which plays into all the things you can do there, it's adjacent to the schools, the skull, nature trails. Um, and public transportation was indicated as one of the challenges that the town should prioritize, so though the service was quite limited in twenty nineteen, Green Mountain Transit ended that route entirely, that links the village to Taff Corners. Um, and it's very unlikely that a fixed bus route service is gonna come back. Um, in our eight-year town plan timeline, so thinking about that multimobility study, um, thinking about ways that people connect the village to Taff Corners Bike Path. Um, I picked this postcard. Join the old Williston and the new Williston and develop an old Williston into a classic New England village. In twenty fifty, uh, Highway Two is wide and provides plenty of space for pedestrians, bikes and vehicles, and the village is vibrant and crowded.
And tree lined, and utilities are underground.
Yes.
Yeah. They, we had our trees trimmed this month, this past month.
Uh, with public engagement, we also heard some complaints about the lack of cell signal in the village, um, as well as that beloved, everybody loves the library and wants it to stay in the village, and that kind of came out of that library community center scoping study where there's a desire to keep the library on the green and enhance it. Um, so who do we still need to talk to, um, thinking about the certified local government program, CLG and state historic preservation, uh, public works, Old Brick Church, Juste, Historical Society, V-Trans, schools, um, Whitney Hill Senior Living. Uh, and now into the goals, so in terms of transportation, create safe connections, calm traffic and enhance visual appeal. Uh, taking on that scoping study for possibly Class One Town Highway in the village. Uh, V-Trans has it in their distant future to do a corridor study. Um, it's been pushed off, and I think even now it's still timed TBD.
It might happen during this plan period, like twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty-one.
Yeah.
So.
And that's just a scoping study?
That's, well, it's a corridor study.
A corridor study.
It's a, hey, we're gonna dig up the whole darn road and um get the concrete out from under the pavement, so what should we be thinking about when we do a project of that magnitude, that's, that's.
And they've been doing all the mapping of, that three-dimensional mapping.
Right.
In preparation for that.
Right.
I thought as the people who were doing the survey thought that that might come in twenty twenty-nine, the actual redevelopment of Route Two.
Maybe, um.
And even then it would, even then. Be like next year or something, that they were gonna, because you were telling.
Well, we were, we were told the corridor study was pushed off because the project was getting pushed back as well, so we'll keep an eye on it, it, it would be really nice if it happened sooner, because it impacts a lot of towns.
And even then, it would still be a state highway, so if it's a Class One Town Highway, there would be more options for how the lanes and bike lanes are designed, pedestrian crossings and bump outs on street parking, thinking about ways to explore transportation improvements to enhance multimodal transportation, possibly um, you know, continuing that bike path along Williston Road as an off-street connection.
I'm sure you say trees in somewhere.
Yeah, I haven't talked about trees at all in this, so we'll get that in there.
Okay.
Um.
It will calm traffic, it will make it feel comfortable.
Thinking about the two main intersections, so Oak Hill Road to the west and North Williston Road to um, excuse me, Old Stage Road and then Oak Hill Road North Williston Road, so one point in that time, there was the roundabout, that got shot down. So is it time to rethink about that intersection, should the town be thinking about, you know, moving the timeline beyond what V-Trans would do to enhance these intersections?
Yes.
Yes, it should, and, and it should be on the table to have both of them be roundabouts for traffic calming reasons.
Um, thinking about official map and the off-road multi-use path system, should it extend farther east, so local neighborhoods like French Hill Manor, Sun Down Drive, and Tenets don't have a safe pedestrian connection to the village, if it went all the way down French Hill, then if you're coming from the Richmond Park and Ride exit eleven, I do this every day, I should know its number, um, should there be a safe off-road connection eastward, and that kind of ties into neighboring communities as well? Um, and then not infrastructure methods to encourage vibrancy and other forms of transportation, and this is mainly collaborating with the school, so most of the backup we see in the village is pickups and drop-offs, so rather than putting in a turning lane on Route Two for the school, can they change things programmatically um or have a policy or continue, we continue to support the um walk and roll the school days? Um, I'm gonna pause there on transportation before we go to the next goal.
Ten years ago, I asked, actually Melinda, uh, fifteen years ago, I asked the, then I asked some people at the school um, if they would like me to do a survey of parents dropping off kids to find out like, why, you know, why not the bus? You know, is it a work-related maintenance, is it, you know, your kid is carrying a trombone some larger item that Chieftain would be an expert on, you know, what, what is it, why do you drive your kid to school when there's school bus service?
Because they go with a helicopter, otherwise they drop them off with a helicopter.
Exactly.
Drone, drones.
Right, I mean, really, that's the way of the future, and they, they said, no, we don't need to know that, and I, but I've always thought that that would actually be really valuable information to have about, you know, I can believe it, a few weeks ago, um, I guess it was April break, and, and it was like, oh my gosh, the amount of traffic that is gone, you know, during April break was incredible. I mean, it's, it's partly school drop-off related, but it's also that more people, you know, people with school-aged kids tend to maybe like take vacation and aren't going to work either, but, but it was really um, amazing, and you know, I guess I'm a big fan of school buses, they're, you know, they are energy efficient compared to each individual car, and they they're safer um than cars, they, you know, there's a lot of things, but, but I think that the baseline is what are parents' concerns? To try to understand why, why, what is the decision matrix in which?
Are you in touch with Amy Brewer? Uh, she's one of the people leading these walk to school days.
Yeah, I tried to get that started at that time.
Yeah, and the administration's very supportive and participating in those walk to school meetings.
Things have changed, that's really good to hear.
Yeah, there's been really good momentum around that, that year, it's gotten bigger every time they've done it, they've done it like at least once a month. And yeah, I mean, there's, there's Safe Routes to School Committee meetings going on that, you know, the principal of Central is in that meeting every time. Um, the conversation about drop-off being what it is has come up in some of those meetings, so there might be a lot more receptiveness. And I think the impact is most acutely felt right here in the village, you, you know, even though people are driving kids to Allenbrook as well.
Melinda's got her hand raised, I know she's been involved in the walk to school.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, I, I just wanted to say that I think the, the walk to, Williston Walk to School Program has been so successful that um I'm gonna nominate it for notable project for the uh Vermont Bike Ped, uh, whatever it is, Bike Ped Summit um awards. So.
That's great.
I think it's really been successful.
I, I stayed in touch with that issue partly because of Green Mountain Transit stuff, and partly because I now have a household member who's attending one of the schools, and the parents have scheduled, things that I hear, and they're like, schedule, like, I gotta leave the house to go to work and I, my kid, or I um, or, or schedule, like, I can't get the kid out the door at six forty-five, and then after that, concerned with younger kids having older kids on the bus, and because there's no monitor on the bus, it's just the driver, and the driver has to pay attention to driving. And convenience, and then the unspoken one is just wanting to take care of your kid, I know.
Yeah.
And a lot of people feel that urge to, to do it, not have the kid be off in, in the face of some kind of feeling of danger. Or burn any amount of carbon.
Right.
Child, let me say.
Anyway, sorry for my little rant, but um, I, I, you know, think that would be a great.
So I'll add the, to explore more, on that section of goals, trees and utilities, um, and then mention more about the the Safe Routes to School, I'm gonna amp that up in this, in that section.
That would be great.
My grandson's bus driver puts um colorful lights all around on the inside, and it makes it a nice place to be, and that really, I think, helps. And I agree, Mountain Transit wanted to have um wifi on every bus, so you, you do things that encourage people to want to.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so shifting to the next goal, maintain historic and designer review land use regulations. I mean, considering expanding the regulation townwide, so number one is assuming village bylaw is done, which will happen. And that monitoring, so reporting, doing those audits, how, how's it going, what projects have happened. Um, action two, adopt a townwide historic overlay, explore land use regulations that set a threshold that allows or prevents demolition in growth districts, growth center industrial districts, and this can be rewarded, and I think really capture that explore can be a whole spectrum before you decide what you're adopting. Maybe it's okay to demolish something like the Robert House for a U-Haul, but you just wanna document it or have a couple months delay for you know, advertise the whole thing for sale or part it out um before you just bulldoze it to the more extreme end of the spectrum, which is saying, no, you can't demolish it. Um, so exploring, should there be a townwide overlay, and then with that explore land use regulations that continue to support adaptive reuse of historic buildings, and that parallels you know, with Agroll as well, maybe there are uses that you wouldn't normally allow in that district, but it makes sense in order to allow a historic home or building to be repurposed. Looking at the zoning district boundaries eastward, um, it goes from village at the Allenbrook to residential zoning district, and then around Johnson Farm, it becomes Agroll, so maybe it makes sense to extend the village zoning district, possibly the designation area, couple more opportunities for commercial, expand sidewalks. Um, it is important to note that the change in zoning district boundary might not necessarily move the sewer boundary. The change in zoning district boundary might not necessarily move the sewer boundary. And even if you moved the sewer boundary, it would be at the developers fruition to put in the line, so. There's, there's a couple of historic homes in this se- section of town that feel like they're in the village. And maybe there could be some adaptive reuse going on, but they're not in the village. Um, and then examine and adopt design standards in the RZD and ARZD, so the public perception of the village. Extends beyond the regulatory boundaries, um, I think we heard that a lot through the Glazer process where people feel like. Up towards Mountain B Road and Adams Farm Market is an extension of the village. Um, eighty-nine is kind of a, a hard stop on the south, but extending northward. The village is quite a nebulous place. Um, for the public perception, so. Should the design standards and intention that we have here extend out, especially as we have these more infill projects? Um, and in talking through the hack, they're very, the historical design committee, they're very. Conscientious about affordability, so if you are exploring design standards, that they not be for aesthetics only, but. Um, aren't making housing more expensive when we're having a housing crisis. Um, another strategy would be streamlining the land use permit process. Uh, so delegating all design review to the Development Review Board. Um, which would effectively dissolve the, the Historic Design Committee. Um, into, and then, then that committee could possibly be repurposed, so it could be an economic development. Culture, Economic and Cultural Development Committee, it could be a um, path, um, Bike Ped Committee. So where we're at right now in the planning office is pretty capped out on the number of committees we staff. And if, if another one is added, maybe one is repurposed to serve a new function. Thinking about the Development Review Board as well, with the adoption of four-based code, their workload has shifted quite a bit, so. Their schedule could open up to take on more of this advisory design review. Um, in their workload. I'm gonna pause there on this second goal. Questions and comments?
I don't, I don't know about solving the HAD, or whatever it's called now. What is it called now?
Historic and Design Advisory Committee. Yeah, and that, yeah, and that, that name change was, they're not just architectural, and even some of the designs in chapter twenty-two are about. Pedestrian wayfinding to entrances and that kind of thing, it's more than just architecture as.
I just wanna say the idea of townwide overlay district, which if, if it doesn't clear to anybody else to me means. Um, that historic homes anywhere in Williston are given the same attention that the ones that are in the historic district here are given. Which I think is a great idea.
Uh, which is a good segue into expand and support historic, historic preservation in and beyond the village, so maintain the CLG status. Um, and consider going after funding, for example, using the funding to upwide the town Historic Sites and Structures Survey. The first one was done in the late seventies, last one was done in the nineteen nineties, so. Um, it's old and it's not geo-referenced, despite some of my efforts, there's still a couple out there that, I don't know. Um, so updating the inventory would be a good first step into. If we do a townwide overlay, what properties would be included, which, which ones have been lost to. Either demolition or significant um, disrepair.
Would, would that be a place to also um, catalog known Abenaki sites? Or would that be something separate?
That would be something separate, and that is an upcoming chapter that our team will be working on is archaeology and cultural resources. Um, and going along with this, establish a municipal historic preservation fund or low note interest loan program, so. There is funding opportunities through the state designation programs, however, things like single-family homes fall through. And yet they are really important to the historic fabric of Williston, so a low or no-interest loan program would. Create a funding opportunity to help people with maintaining or restoring these historic structures that. Contribute to Williston's um, character. Um, and then continue working on expanding a historic preservation outreach program. Um, and doing more about um, getting the word out about local standards as well as state and federal. Um, funding opportunities. Um. When um, I was speaking with the Historic Committee for this, another idea came up, um. Third-party easement, so like there's land trust, there's historic preservation trust, so maybe some really critical properties in Williston. Would have a third-party easement with historic preservation trust to. Keep its maintenance um, in perpetuity.
That's a great idea.
Exploring things that aren't the town doing stuff, but further our goals. Um, I'm gonna pause there before going to the next goal.
I think those are great ideas.
Um, and last goal, public investment in the village to enhance, enhance vibrancy and maintain it to meet character. So cultivate a strong relationship between the school, the town, community organizations, I think. Even what Megan was talking about, where there was resistance in the past about. Park, cart, cars, and bike walk, and now the walk and roll program is so prolific, so how can we continue to? Support these programs and work with the schools, you know, the annual craft fair that's held there is a really popular event. So how do we continue to cultivate these relationships as well as National Guard, maybe keep our eyes on the property for purchasing it? Um, and a big one is a master plan for the use, maintenance and continued preservation of. The town's municipal buildings, um, including the Old Brick Church, Stovepipe Corner Schoolhouse, so. Thinking about what maintenance and preservation activities are these buildings gonna need. Annually, over the eight-year cycle of the plan, looking at twenty, fifty years. And then what are the values that the community has for how they're used and maintained, so. Um. What, and what changes would and would not be acceptable, and make some broad statements and some goals and values, so. When it comes time for, for example, like a Verizon to come forward with a proposal. That there's something beyond just a single committee or a single slate of select board members, and there's been some community process to. Back up, okay, what, what are we doing here, what's the main vision? Um, and this could also take into consideration some of the costs, so what is it, what is the cost to? Maintain the Old Brick Church in the town hall, and how can these things, they're not gonna. Generate all of their costs, but how can Old Brick Church or Stovepipe Schoolhouse use to um. You know, make the expense worthwhile or generate some money back. Um, and celebrate the two-hundredth anniversary of the Old Brick Church, that would be happening. Um, and branding and wayfinding, so thinking about not only digital branding between all town departments and programs, but then how it. Affects place, um, really tying in the goal to link Taff Corners in the village and rural parts of town, so we have these three very distinct areas. In, in industrial as well, but using signage and wayfinding to. Bring them together and make Williston feel like a cohesive place, even though, and it has very different um, sides to it. Um.
Excellent.
And then thinking about the role as a civic and community center, so explore year-round third spaces. What can the, the village green or a community park have where it's um, more usable year-round? Thinking about the library expansion and renovation project, and we'll probably get into more of that with. Thinking about the town facilities and services chapter, but there is a strong goal about keeping.
What does the word third spaces mean?
Not work, not home.
Okay.
The third one, the other, the other place you go.
And I know, and one thing that Jill likes to say about third spaces too is. You don't have to pay money or drink alcohol to be there, so a place where you can go and gather with friends and not. Have to be beholden to capitalism.
You got it.
Public Square.
The Public Square, you know, a better ice rink in the wintertime, maybe fire pits where you can gather in the winter. Um, and then thinking about the village green, um, in addition to that library expansion. Um, and then this table is folding in the Val- Village Master Plan, so where. Some of those existing goals, most of them are, would be within this village chapter, but some things that are more. Transportation-focused, or like a municipal facility like that. New stuff about a master plan for town buildings might live in a different chapter from village, but linked to each other.
So, part of why this all exists is because we're talking about. The, the Village Master Plan will be, you know, appendicized and referred to. But not really a part of the comprehensive plan anymore, because we're trying to pull everything that's left to do out of it into this more organized. Framework, so similarly, um, probably not with a whole chapter written about it. But when we talk land use, economic development, transportation, infrastructure, we'll be referencing the Taff Corners Vision Plan a lot. And we'll definitely, that'll be, you know, living in the appendix. But when you're going and looking for goal strategies, actions about Taff Corners, they're gonna live right here in the plan, so. Particularly where the Village Master Plan was structured like a mini-town plan, um, having a little crosswalk like this is just really useful, because it was fairly recent. Say, we didn't, we didn't just write that and, you know, do a little bit of it and then chuck it away, we, it's, it's here now, so. That's what that is.
Great.
Get a little bit of time before nine, if you wanna talk, Melinda, about. The people or the fabric.
Sure, um, hold on. Oh, um, I can't share my screen.
I got it.
Okay. Um. Yeah, so I, I feel like, uh, I talked about this a little bit before, so I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time, but. Um, Steve was like the primary um, author of this chapter, and he's uh, an amazing writer. Um, and it's mostly descriptive, uh, well, there's, there's a little bit of um, goals and. Uh, objectives and strategies at the end, but mainly, um, it's a. You know, it talks a little bit in the third paragraph about, um. How previous town plans didn't address livable, resilient, and, and equitable, um, and how this plan is, is going to do that. Um, and then, you know, then it talks about the, the um, town values policy. Um, describing the town's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and anti-racism. And so what, you, you know, what the objectives and strategies at the end of the chapter. Really um, lean on is this town values policy, because the town um. Felt that it was important enough to adopt it as policy, and so. Um, it really should be in the town plan, um, and it should be implemented. Um, shouldn't just be, you know, words, but we should, you know, describe how we're going to get it done. Um, and then if you go to the next page, um. So, you know, talks a little bit about, more about the town values policy and what it means, um. And that the objectives and strategies called for in this chapter and throughout this plan. Are rooted in commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, um. And so in the history, current facts and projections, um, this is where there's um. A bunch of description, um, and, you know, uh. Steve really made this description, I feel, of demographics really engaging. And, you know, like, he really sort of tells a story about why, you know, why this is important and um, how, what. Uh, how the construction of the interstate affected, um, you know, the, um, the shape of Williston as a community. Um, and then he talks about, you know, how Williston benefits from this high-speed transportation network that goes through the center of the town and then. But it also retains its rural nature, um, and, you know, that's, you know. There's a reason that old town charm, new town spirit is town's motto, um. And then there's a section on population growth. Uh, basically, um, you know, going from a sleepy rural community to. Um, a suburban town that's integrated into the metropolitan region of Chittenden County. Um, and, you know, how, like, looking at the graph, um, you know, there's, there's, um. Some sentiment that, you know, there's like so much growth, unbridled growth in the town, but. You know, it really hasn't been um, out of control, unbridled growth, it's been relatively manageable. Um, and the town has managed to, for the most part, keep up with um, services and facilities. Um, and then, um, you know, this just talks about population growth and relationship to Chittenden County and Vermont. Um, and then, you know, here's a paragraph just talking about. That feeling of growth um, as being seen in a negative light. Um, and then talking about, you know, that the negative sense happens because of fear, the fear of change. Um, and growth is a form of change. And uh, it must be managed, um, talks a little bit about how it's managed, um. And then scrolling down, um. You know, and then, but also have growth as a positive force, um, and indicates desire, uh, town's desirability, economic viability. Vibrancy, um, implies that people wanna live in a place. Uh. And then, um, then there's a section that talks about diversity, which, you know, it's. It's challenging to, to talk about diversity and sort of, um, what. At first glance appears to be sort of a more. Uh, relatively homogeneous town, um, certainly racially speaking, um. You know, Williston being um, predominantly white, um. But, you know, this talks about, this first paragraph talks about just why diversity is important. Why it's desirable, um, you know, a town that's diverse, is dynamic, it's not boring. Uh, and then, um. You know, talks a little bit about economic diversity, um, in Williston's um, business, businesses ranging from farming to. Uh, multinational corporations, um. Uh, and then talks a little bit about the age, demographic, and aging population. Um, projected population growth and the, the shrinking household size. And the implications of that on um, homes, talks a little bit about different generations, um. And, and how they chose to live, um, the kinds of homes that they chose to live in. Uh, and then, um. Right, and then talks about millennials having values of, um, of protecting the environment and being more, um. Uh, sort of, uh, wanting to live more in apartment and con- or condo settings, sharing space with others. Uh. Hence the demand for smaller uh, living spaces that have been built in Taff Corners. Um, and then, um, talks a little, talks about uh, race. Um, and the, you know, sort of the increasing racial diversity, although the town is still. Very predominantly white, but, um, but that's changing, um, has changed.
What is, what is MOE on that chart?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, we gotta spell that out, it's a margin of error.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. And then, um, lastly, there's, you know, other measures of diversity, um, including economic diversity. Including, um, uh. Uh, let's see, um, education, um, ethnic diversity, um. And also, uh, diversity of, um. People, of differently-abled people, um, and. I hesitate a little bit with all these different. I hesitate a little bit with all these different measures of diversity, simply because the margins of error are probably really high. When you talk about, um, when you, when you, um. Try to, you know, some summarize these different measures of diversity in such a small area as Williston. So there is that risk, but, um, anyway, um. And then, um, I think that's mainly it for description, if you scroll down, um. Yeah, basically, change is inevitable, um. And we have the opportunity to work with power, these powerful forces of change to create the livable, resilient and equitable Williston we wanna call home. Let me just pause there in case people have comments about that section. Anything?
Um, it, it's very readable, and for anybody who's listened to many of Steve's podcasts, you can hear, you can almost hear his voice saying. Phrases like this is something worth paying attention to.
Yeah, not, not boring, like, it reads like a story, which I thought was really, um, you know, I learned things, I didn't know what our. Our motto was when I read this, I feel like you read along because it's telling you a story.
Yeah.
Very enjoyable.
Sorry, the, the dates, the dates for millennials are not correct, otherwise.
Had a different definite, it was millennial, right?
Yes, oh, yeah, eighty-one to ninety-six, not two thousand and four.
Keep going, what was this new term you had, um?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. He must gotten that from somewhere, because he has another definition for what's two thousand and four and beyond.
Gen Z.
No, he didn't call it Gen Z.
Plurals, maybe?
Yeah, what, what?
Two thousand and four through. Uh, nobody knows that. You know that, Jill?
No, I, that's what I mean, I learned things in this, like I had never heard plurals, and that's what my daughter is, is a plural, apparently.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah. And then there's Alpha, Alpha is the new, the newest one.
Right.
Gen Z is, is uh ninety-six or so.
Where are the pollers?
Pollers?
No, no, there's one that was pulled out, like definitely was polar, that was commenting on coming of age, like. With like the political polarity and like. So like climate change and like the political climate.
Anyway, we should probably have a.
Generations are, it's gonna be like our future land use map where there's like a fade.
Go ahead, Sheila.
We need Steve.
Sheila, what do you have to contribute here?
Um, sorry, I, I don't have, I didn't wanna interrupt that conversation, because that's not what I was commenting on, I thought, um. The one that I had here, I really liked how specific the actions are, and this is. Not just true here, so I'm just happy to be calling it out here, because I found that um under the last objective. Consider the equity implications of policies under all amounts of town plan, that's a great objective, but I think we need to. And it looks like maybe it's not developed yet, but like, I just wanna make sure we don't just leave this here, um. Without more specificity. Um, because. It's easy to say we wanna eliminate racism, but I think we need to kinda. Be more concrete, so that we hold ourselves to specific actions.
Yeah, I I agree, and um I was kinda struggling with that, so if anybody wants to kinda plug in stuff, feel free.
Well, and Melinda, that would be the next thing that I should be able to then say, and it, it is not an easy one, so I'm not, yeah, like I said, not a. Hundred percent out of criticism, just a thought, like we need to be. Figure out how to get, get some concrete pieces there. And I'm not, I'm not, especially at this time of night, going to be a useful.
Is, is there a way for those of us in different groups to comment on the other ones? Cause I tried to see how to do that and I couldn't figure out how to do it, I couldn't get into reviewer or whatever it is, review mode.
We should be able to do that.
Yeah, you should be able to.
We can check that.
View only links.
Yeah, that, that's the problem, so.
You have to go back to the.
We'll, we'll, we'll email.
The root, root, okay.
The way back in the file, these are, these are just anyone.
And then like hyperlink those links on your, on your, your toolbar, make a bookmark.
Can I just, um, one quick, just, this is the first time I've seen these, um, and I definitely will. Um, have a look at this whole chapter. Um, one way that may kind of shift things to what Sheila's talking about. Is to focus on, um. Thinking about the other pieces of our goals, including things like belonging and inclusion. Um, so that. We're, we're not tasked with dismantling all of structural racism. Going back five hundred years and more, but, but rather that we recognize. The, the legacies and continued, um, policies that. That uh create inequity and and injustice, and then kind of. Address a, you know, a forward-moving focus on the other questions that we've had about belonging and inclusion and. Like, okay, well, what, what does that look like? And. Yeah, so that was just a quick comment, as I said, I'm happy to look through it.
Well, up next time. We didn't get to talk about fabric.
That's a fun read.
That, that one is fun to read too, it just talks about that whole weaving concept, um, I think. I don't know if I, if we have shifted this since I wrote this, but um, I know I'm working with Green on economic development. And then I have village master plan, is that still the truth or no?
No, I think we're gonna do social infrastructure in the.
And then conservation areas and energy and climate resilience, so. Uh, the ones we look at tonight are, are by no means done, um, so we will keep cycling through these and iterating as we go. Sorry, somebody, Melinda.
Um, yeah, I just, it's not gonna be energy and climate, um, I wanna save that until the energy committee's done with their draft and. So I thought, um, probably education.
Yeah, I think I have it right in our staff meeting agenda now, but haven't, didn't have from last week, so. I'll, I'll adjust these as we go.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you so much, Steph, I know this is like, and to the commissioners who have actually done real writing.
I will try to carry more load now.
It's all right, it's, it's, it's a grind and it's a little continuous through the middle of summer, but then we're gonna have. The big lump of clay we need, you know, to to mold this into a really great plan, and um. I think we're, we're well on track and, um, you know. This is the fun stuff for planners, it's just the fact that we have to do it in between everything else we're doing that makes it hard. So, thank you. I don't think I had anything else on there.
The town budget passed?
Town budget passed.
How, how many people voted?
Um, it was five ninety-five to four seventy, so whatever that is.
Thousand and something, yeah, and fifty-six percent Eric said was the yes, so.
A quick question for June fourth.
Yep.
Um, there's a. Are, are we going to the select board public hearing on Home Act bylaw amendments?
Probably not, unless you really, really, if somebody really wants to come over with me, but I'll, I'll talk them through that. Um, when I introduced that to the select board, it was months ago at the same time as the map change for Blair Park. And they carried forward the map change amendment, but wanted more, had room to do the Home Act stuff, so. You know, the way I presented the Home Act changes was here, we're, we're just ever so slightly doing more than the minimum the state requires here. And, and most of what we're doing, it's more than the minimum, this for clarity. And, and we're doing what we gotta do, and a lot of heads nodding about that, so I'm, I'm.
Yeah, okay. Corner, so.
Right, and we're, we're, we're dialing six stories back down to five for affordable projects, um, so.
Okay.
I think there's support for that.
That can be shared.
So. All right.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.